...of Custer County, Mr. B will come to order. Let the record show that it is 9:00 a.m. on January 31st. Mr. Barry, would you lead us into pledge allegiance, sir?
Pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undebted, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Madam Secretary, may I call the role, please?
Commissioner Flowers.
Present.
Commissioner Candor.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Present.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And clerk to the board Kelly Camper, present.
Thank you, appreciate that. Welcome, everyone. Appreciate you being here. At this time, I'd like to turn the floor over to Commissioner Prince for the proclamation.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming this morning. As we all know, on September 3rd, 2017, our community suffered a tremendous tragedy when Ben and Weldon Rusher lost their lives in a pond in Custer County. They were out having a social event with some friends. Weldon didn't surface from swimming in a pond. Ben, without any regard for his own safety, selfishly, heroically attempted to save his brother. Unfortunately, we lost both young men that night, and our community has grieved ever since. As a result of Ben's bravery, the county felt that it would be appropriate to name today, January 31st, 2018, as Ben Rusher Day, to honor his heroism and his devotion to our community. At this time, if I could ask his parents, John and Ewen, to meet me in the open space over here, I'd like to read the proclamation. The proclamation from the county, Custer County, Colorado, proclamation dated January 31st, 2018, declaring that day Ben Rusher Day. Whereas Custer County recognizes that on the night of September 3rd, 2017, Ben Rusher, without regard for his own safety, did his life trying to save his brother Weldon Rusher. And whereas Ben Rusher was a lifelong resident of Custer County, and whereas Ben Rusher was well-known by and a friend to a great number of the residents of Custer County, and whereas Ben Rusher's family is deeply rooted in the Custer County community, and whereas Custer County would like to honor Ben Rusher for his selfless act of love and bravery, now therefore the Board of County Commissioners of Custer County, Colorado, declare today, January 31st, 2018, as Ben Rusher Day, signed and adopted on 10th day of January, 2018, signed by Chairman Tom H. Flower, Vice Chair William R. Candor, Commissioner Jay Prince, and attested to by Kelly Camper, clerk and report. You notice that our flag is at half-mast today? It would have been anyway because of the tragedy we've had with the deputy that was slain just recently, if not, what it is today in honor of death.
And thank you, everybody, for coming.
I'd like to thank the Board of County Commissioners and everybody else that supported us and continues to. There's a lot of people give their lives for others. War and other places. Fortunately, these boys were all intact, and they were here at home, and this is a great recognition from this county to these boys, and I thank you very much.
Well said.
We'll stand in recess for about 10 minutes. Order, following the recess after the proclamation presentation to the Rusher family. Next item of business is amendments to the agenda, gentlemen?
I do not have any, sir.
Nor do I.
None here.
Thank you, sir. Motion to approve the minutes of January 24th. If you gentlemen have had an opportunity to read those.
I did, and I'll move to approve it. Minutes in the last meeting, January 24th.
Thank you, sir.
I'll second that.
Moving in second to approve the minutes of the January 24th meeting. Any further discussion, corrections, or additions? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. Minutes of January 24th have been approved.
You're gonna get that.
Audience introductions.
Did you have to puke us for the sample? Who's left?
Detective Allison, Airport Advisory Board.
Tracy Mallor, Tribune, I'm a G A, I'm an assistant.
Vernon Roth, IT.
Ben Orloff, Interested Citizen.
Thank you, welcome. Glad to have you here.
I got a short one, unless Jay, you were gonna speak, did you get some?
I'll go after you.
I got a real short one since the last meeting. Been working with Gary Hyde on the road to bridge stuff, looking at a few things, and one of the prime interests is the culvert over Herman. And the last time we all met, it was an issue because of the times we shut down, and what are our options with the DOT and the DOLA grants and all that? Gary had a meeting yesterday, and we'll have to, I'll get, we'll have an agenda item here as soon as he and I get back together, but it looks like it's gonna be almost impossible to deal with DOT and the DOLA grant together. By the time you comply with all the restrictions and time, it's gonna take five weeks and 320,000 bucks, which is crazy, and a right-of-way amendment, apparently, because it's too narrow. So it's just gonna be too hard, it's gonna be probably a decision we'll make to try to do it ourselves, hire a contractor, and it's gonna cost a little more, but it's still within budget. We'll come back with the date of the man.
All right. Mr. Prince?
Just a couple of small items. Obviously, all three of us attended the Economic Development Meeting a couple of days ago, I think it was Monday, which was always very informative. Tom and I went to Canyon yesterday for the Affordable Housing Meeting that Upper Arkansas Council Governments put on. They reported to us that the grant for the study on affordable housing, they have in hand, and there are multiple counties involved. Tom and I represent a Custer County, of course, and there were several others present and several on the phone. Money will be coming to do a study to determine the needs of affordable housing. Why this is important is because that study is necessary for any developer who wants to come in and build affordable housing. They do that to earn tax credits, aside from being good neighbors of the community who wanna help people, but the tax credits, they need a study to show that there's a need within the community to apply for those. So there's an altruistic aspect to this from the developers, but it's a very important aspect. The county previously committed, when this first was, this grant was asked to, for, from DOLA, the county at the time said that we would participate, there'll be some economic investment that the county will make into this when the time comes, it will not be huge. I think our, I think it's a 50-50 match, DOLA's putting up 30,000, and all of the counties will match the 30,000. Tom and I talked about maybe talking with West Cliff and Silver Cliff, see if they want to be part of that to keep our costs down. And we have two things I just wanna remind us of, we have a workshop on February 5th. Dennis Hunt will be coming. Dennis Hunt is one of the most intelligent people I know about commissioner arrangement, if that's a word. He'll come, it's basically, it's a workshop, it's open to anybody. He will help give us insight into what commissioners can and cannot do, and he'll answer our questions for us. He's with CTSI, which is our insurance company, and Dennis, I've had him down, I don't mean high. The Board of County Commissioners asked him to speak to us multiple times. He's just a tremendous amount of information, he helped us with the budgeting process, and he's great on that. So he'll be here on February 5th, and also on February 6th at 2:00 in the afternoon, the Affordable Housing Committee, the local one, will be meeting, and I'll be attending that. That's all, I hope, Commissioner.
What time is that?
2:00.
Affordable Housing, 2:00.
2:00. Questions?
When is this, the commission workshop?
The commission, it's 10:00, and we're in our commissioner room.
What are the, did you say four counties?
I believe, is it six total?
There's six total.
That's what I thought.
Three have already started their assessment, housing assessment studies, so they have not indicated whether they are gonna be totally inclusive in this new study or not, so we're waiting to find out, but Teller, Park, Chafee, Custer, Fremont, and?
Teller.
Did I say Teller?
Teller, Park, Chafee, Custer.
Fremont.
Fremont.
Where is that meeting, does it matter?
Which meeting are we talking about?
The Affordable Housing.
It'll be in the commissioner's room? The commissioner's room.
Is that open to the public?
Yeah, absolutely, everything we do is open to the public, you're welcome, please do come.
February 6th.
Right, 2:00.
So that was five, I don't suppose you could like to just, pull that other one out of your head?
Was it not worth?
Chafee, did you say?
I don't remember. I can bet, of course.
Chafee, is that on your list?
Teller, Park, Chafee, Custer, Fremont. Not El Paso.
No.
Lake.
Park.
Or Lake.
Or Lake.
Was Lake, was Lake, thank you.
Lake County, thank you.
Yeah, four of those counties represented the meeting that Jay spoke about, and the other two were not there, so I kinda lost track of. I would guess probably four or five of those counties would end up being involved, but we'll find out. Okay, anything else, sir?
While we're on that subject, can I just talk about affordable housing, because we have a very short agenda. The issue with affordable housing is not that we wanna get people without money to move here. The sheriff's office just tried to hire two deputies, cannot find a place to live that they can afford based on that, on their salary. We have a tremendous issue with teachers, the same thing. We try and hire teachers, they come, they fall in love at the valley, and they go to try to find a house, and it's a major issue. So affordable housing is not just to take care of low-income people, there's a tremendous need within the community to have housing that workers could come to in any industry we have, so that they can afford to live here. So I just want to make that clear, that it's not like we're welcoming, you know, the people under a bridge, that is not the goal, and I'm not saying we wouldn't do that if they came. I can imagine what the headline will say tomorrow, but that's really my emphasis, is to get, so if we have workers here, we can find a place for them to stay at a reasonable cost. Thank you.
Maybe I was not listening, maybe I misunderstood, that DOLA grant for this housing assessment study was a 60,000 dollar grant.
Correct, and it was 50-50 match.
Did you say that DOLA was putting up 30,000?
Correct, it's a 50-50 match.
50-50 match. Okay, anything else, sir?
I'm good.
Since our last meeting, I attended the Legislative Steering Committee meetings from CCI up in Denver on the 25th and 26th, very informational, and then attended a Fair Board meeting the other night, obviously the Regional Housing Meeting in Canyon City yesterday, and while I was down there, I picked up some materials for our maintenance person, Ed Reinhardt, to finish up a couple of projects, mop sinks, one in the annex and one in that basement, so he's working on those today, so we should finish that up. The plumbers did finish their work and closed out our plumbing permit, so that process, or that project is in the process of wrapping up today. And then Saturday, we are going to start in on the door again. We will not penetrate this wall, it's right back there in the corner by the television, we will not penetrate that wall until we're actually ready to frame that door in. I ordered a door, solid core inch and three-quarter, single four, Luhon mahogany faced door, and as luck would have it, they dropped it off of the forklift, unloaded it, valet ace and destroyed it, so they're reordering it, and it's supposed to be Tuesday or Wednesday, and I indicated to them that that was not an issue with us, because we wouldn't be ready for it by Tuesday or Wednesday anyway, so they got us another door. I wanted also, just as a reminder, today, after this meeting at 11:00, we have a, not a retirement, but a going-away social for Joe McCarthy over in the sheriff's office, so hopefully we can slip over there, I think our meeting will be done in plenty of time for that, and then our courthouse security meeting is at 1:30 for that steering committee, I think we'll meet here in the courtroom for that.
1:30?
1:30. And then tomorrow, I will be attending a Homeland Security Advisory Committee meeting in Pueblo, that runs from 8:30 to noon, and so I think that's basically what I've got to report to the board. Anything else, gentlemen? Attorney, items?
Just one thing, on Monday, right after our workshop, I met with the sheriff. At his request, he had a legal question that was perplexing him regarding handling a foreclosure sale. He's charged by statute with doing foreclosure sales for property, so I met with him to try to get a handle on what the issue was, and I did research for a couple of hours and gave him my legal opinion about the particular case, and he communicated that with the attorney that was handling the foreclosure. I saw the sheriff last night at the Trails For All get-together at all aboard West Cliff, and he said that the attorney had accepted my legal opinion on it, and that everything was good, so I think that issue was resolved. The Trails For All meeting last night, by the way, I'm on the steering committee for Trails For All, and I think that was a huge success last night, we had a turnout of probably close to 100 people, and a lot of interest from the public. I was supposed to be manning a table for ATV trails, and I couldn't get to the table, everybody else was around it making, but Larry Weber was there handling it, so I didn't feel like I got left out, but it was a big success, and I think Trails For All is gonna be an asset for the community.
Good. Yeah, I failed to mention, I attended that meeting as well, and we had voted to expend some dollars on that to help them with their rental, and I would guess probably from the looks of it, they were expecting maybe 30 people or 40 people, they had 30 chairs set up initially, and that got overwhelmed, and it was actually standing room only, there were people standing in the back, so I think everybody was pleasantly surprised with the turnout, and they thanked us for our monetary contribution for that publicly, too, so I apologize for not.
There was enough to eat.
Reporting, well, it kinda ran out of food, they just.
They, we're not expecting them.
Twice as many people attended as I think that they were hoping for, let alone expecting, but they were very pleased. Paul Parsons, who of course made a presentation to the commissioners at our last meeting, opened the meeting, did an outstanding job, very, very well-spoken, and they talked about the six different users that they were really targeting, bicyclers, hikers, well, foot traffic, whether it be snowshoeing, or cross mountain skiing, or hiking, and identified some trails that are in existence, and then they had a kind of a audience participation time where they went to a map and indicated where they'd like to see trails, whether they thought the trails were adequate, needed work, should be abandoned, or whatever, so it was, it was a good function. Administrative Assistant Items?
Okay, I have one thing. Terry Munson from the Wet Mountain Fire Protection District called me, and you remember when we signed the IGA for the use of the hangar, not hangar, but whatever it is, down in the air.
Mained building.
Yes. They had a meeting, I guess, and they wanted to add a couple of things, so they just wanted to add a page, but one of them was about bathroom use.
About what?
Bathroom use, and the other one, what did I tell you about? Oh, about no one outside of, using, outside of Wet Mountain Fire Protection District using the vehicles that they have down there, so.
Darn, I was looking forward to that.
And she was, she had emailed it to me, but the email didn't come through, so I'm still waiting on those documents, and as soon as I get them, I will forward them to you, and I'll forward them to you as well.
Okay.
We'll have some discussion.
Yeah, okay.
Can I just say, one quick little thing?
Yeah, we're gonna talk about that, I mean, is that all?
That's it, that's all I have.
All right, good, yes, sir?
Okay, as far as bathroom facilities, there are in bathroom facilities right there at the garage.
And that door, it goes from the garage directly into the bathroom, so that door is unlocked?
Yes, it's where the hot water system and all is.
Right.
I think they just wanted to make sure they were able to use it.
Well, open the door.
Well, yeah, I'm not sure they knew what the location of that bathroom was, like.
Or that there was one.
Yeah, they won't, typically they wouldn't be going down the hallway and using the bathroom or the shower, as they could access that bathroom right off of the bays.
Well, they asked me one time for a, you know, a quick tour, and what do you have showed up?
I'll take this opportunity to welcome the new chairman of the advisory committee for the airport, Mr. Butler, thank you for being here. I'm assuming that we will get that IGA back from the fire department, and then if you gentlemen do not have a problem with accessing the bathroom off of the bays, then I wouldn't see there being a reason why we couldn't re-sign that IGA. We'll have a motion of that effect when the time comes, but I wanted your input on that, to see what you thought.
But, well, they can use that one, it's fully functional, and we would not have to be issuing another key.
Right. For the. And that's a unisex bathroom, correct? There's not two male, female, there's one bathroom?
There's one, yes.
Where's the locker?
We have a locker.
Okay, yeah, okay, good. So we will get with the fire department and get that IGA back, probably on February 5th or 6th meeting, or 6th or 7th meeting. Anything else, Ms. Brenda?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to old business, we have Eaton Sales on our agenda to talk about the dispenser, the fuel dispenser down at the airport. I don't believe that gentleman's here, 'cause I think we know everybody.
Unless he's not, I was gonna say, not other, I didn't think.
We'll get our sergeant-at-arms to check it out and see, that'd be awkward, wouldn't it?
Sitting in there.
Have you gentlemen talked to them? Do you know where they plan on being here today, or?
Clint was the one that was dealing with this.
Yeah, planned not to communicate with you since last July.
Okay, okay. Nope.
I didn't see any of them in the building.
He was gonna be here at 10, is what I told him, so.
Oh, okay, all right, well, we'll roll that down then, and we can.
Come back to it.
Come back to that later on, thank you. Any other old business, gentlemen, come for the group? Okay, hearing none, moving on to new business. Let me back, well, we haven't decided anything, so there will be public comment if the Eaton Sales rep shows up today. Review the vouchers and sign the checks. Gentlemen, have you had an opportunity to look at that list?
I did.
Vouchers? Okay. As did I, I had a question or two and talked with Donnie yesterday, and got those cleared up. It was just my lack of understanding, I don't remember now exactly what they were, but I did go through those, and the chair would entertain a motion to approve those vouchers.
I also moved to approve the vouchers.
Great, I'll second that. Moving in second to approve the vouchers for January discussion.
Look normal to me.
Okay, hearing none, should you vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Sorry, let me vote aye, oppose nay. Motion carries, I will initial these. Brenda, do you wanna take these over to Donnie? Public comment? Anything on anybody's mind this morning? We've got plenty of time.
I was wondering, when did the, I heard, I don't know if this is true or not, that the agricultural production of marijuana in Custer County is prohibited, is that true or false?
That is true.
That is true, and it wouldn't be necessarily agricultural production, but any marijuana grow in Custer County.
Well.
Go ahead.
If I may, I think their state statute says that a person can grow up to.
Yeah, I'm gonna say.
Six plants or something, but as far as agricultural grow, it is outlawed in all of Custer County and both towns.
And did any of you vote for that?
Sir?
Did any of you on the commission vote for that law?
It's never been brought to a vote, either.
It's an ordinance, and that was done when, several years ago.
That was done in 2016.
I think it was before that.
It seems like we're interested in, you know, industry and development in this county, and we've got a law in the state of Colorado that legalized marijuana, it seems like we wouldn't wanna discourage the production of it in our county, which would produce jobs there.
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
On two different occasions in years past, the same question came on the election ballot, and they were overwhelmed, and they voted out twice by the people of the county. And so when it came up for the, where the commissions could opt out, so to speak, of any production in the county based on the new marijuana law, the commissions had already had a mandate twice, and not this commission board, it's one before, and so it's illegal for any production of marijuana in the county for commercial purposes, no production, manufacturing, sales, it could be all.
If you have a medical authorization, then I think you can grow up to six plants.
You just think anybody could.
At that time, medical allowed six plants, and we know that the legislature's revisited that now, it used to be, get away with about 99 plants, but the legislature's cut that down also now, for personal use, so.
Go ahead, yes, sir. Thank you. This question has come up before the board multiple times, previous commission, and we had the sheriff involved with the 99 plant versus six plants, and we learned that legally we can opt out of the 99, but we can't opt out of the, and I'm not sure if it's six or eight, but it's just a minimal amount. I will not speak for anybody else in this room, I'll speak for myself. I'm adamantly opposed to any form of marijuana in this county, I think it brings the wrong element, it fights the wrong element, the wrong element uses it. We've had enough illegal grows.
the wrong element uses it. We've had enough illegal grows hidden in our mountains around here. And our sheriff has been successful in capturing some of these people and bringing them to justice. Most of them are lost. And this is just not what Custer County, in this, my personal opinion, this is just not what Custer County is.
Can I ask one other question?
Certainly.
This hasn't got anything to do with marijuana. The commission has three districts, right?
Correct.
Is that right? Now, do you have to live in the district that you run?
Yes.
For?
Yes.
And who does Bolomingo?
Uh, it's split between District Three and District One. So the majority of Bolomingo probably is all in District Three, which is myself.
Okay.
I looked on the map. I thought the dividing line between those two districts was the city limits between Silver Cliff and West Cliff extended north to the county. But that's not correct. It's out. I don't know the name of that county road.
Right.
Yeah, the loop. We've always called it Jones's Corner or the Hay Corner, whatever that county road is. It really kind of lines up with that and goes north to the, to the county line.
Were you here when Silver Cliff actually voted on marijuana?
No.
Are you aware of that?
No.
Okay, so let me just give you a little background.
I've only been here a month.
Okay, great. Welcome.
Full-time.
Welcome and thank you for your comments.
Yeah.
About a year and a half ago, two years ago, Silver Cliff did something I thought was extremely, extremely brave. Instead of just their trustees for the town of Silver Cliff, they decided it was a big enough question. Unlike West Cliff, they voted out just the eight or six trustees. Silver Cliff was very, very brave. And they said, this is too big an issue for us to decide on our own. And they put it out to the voters during a regular election. It was soundly defeated. So I think that was a mandate by at least the voters at Silver Cliff that the connotation from the county and West Cliff, that they also agree with the managing groups, the commissioners, the trustees, that marijuana beyond what is mandated by the state is not something we choose to have and we opted out. So I just wanted to give you an, an insight into Silver Cliff did have a vote on that.
Yeah, we'll just let Pueblo County develop instead of Custer County.
Okay.
I'd like to back up just a minute to our commissioner items. I was remiss in bringing up a topic I wanted to at least throw out to you. I have been considering attending the National Association of Counties in Washington DC. When I looked at the inclusive dates of that conference, I found that it conflicted with our February 6th and 7th meetings. So rather than miss those two meetings, I think I'm gonna pass on attending that conference this year. But certainly I would like to be involved in that next year.
Probably March.
March, I'm sorry. I said that to Brenda the other day in the office. She corrected me. March, yes, March. That conference runs March 2nd through the 7th. And I just don't feel comfortable with missing both of those meetings. So I think I'm gonna take a pass on that this year. And certainly would like to look into that next year. Anything else? Other public comment?
Well...
Go ahead, sir.
I just want to say thank you for me, for declaring this day as Ben Rusher Day. I knew both those boys since they were very young. I drove the school bus for several years, as you know, and I hauled them all over the state for basketball and wrestling and everything. So that was a loss to me personally also. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. Appreciate that. I had a couple of people contact me concerning our proclamation day. And they weren't upset. They were surprised that we weren't including Weldon. And I had to explain to them that this day was about honoring Ben for his sacrifice. It wasn't about the loss, being one. It was about the sacrifice that Ben made for his brother. And when they understood that, they said, oh, got it. Didn't, didn't think about that. So...
Yeah, I had a couple.
Yeah, well, I think whenever spoken about Weldon will be included in that just because.
Yeah.
So they'll not be forgotten.
No, no, that's right.
We don't have to take up all the time that we normally do.
About what?
The meeting.
Well, if we're gonna wait.
I don't wait until 10:00.
Waiting and seeing if Eaton Sales shows up. So if there's no objections, we'll move into recess and take a break.
Excuse me, Joe. Brian, by spelling the word, R-Y-A-N. My last name is P-A-L-L-E.
Got it. Okay, and I did...
Good morning, sir. I'm Kate Price.
Good morning. I'm Ryan Denso.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Brian?
Kate Price.
Bill Canada.
Hi, this is Brian, this is Brian, Brian, and Brian.
Called the meeting back to order. It is 10:12 AM. We have one item of business left to conduct this morning. And that is a presentation and visit with the gentleman Eaton Sales. So we have two gentlemen here. You may know both of them, the airport board, Alan Butler and our old buddy, the former chair, correct? So I don't know, do you gentlemen want to take the lead? Or Mr. Clint, do you want to have the floor or?
Probably would be appropriate. And my involvement in it was that after we got the invoice from Eaton for the installation of the fuel dispenser at the airport, there was an additional charge for troubleshooting because there'd been some problems with the operation of that fuel dispenser. And there was some question about the necessity or the, if there was fault, who was at fault for the necessity for the troubleshooting, let me put it that way. And after talking to Dallas Anderson about this, I sent a letter to Eaton and Mr. Anderson responded. And I think there's, what this board is gonna need to do is hear both sides and do some fact finding as to what was told to Eaton at the time the negotiations were being made. And then decide, you know, whether, what position the board wants to take on paying that additional amount. We did pay the amount, the $8,850. That's been taken care of. So there's approximately $3,500. I'm not quite sure what the figure is. I don't have that number in front of me, but that's the number that's in dispute. So, and it's up to you whether you want to hear from them first as to what they say they were told or whether you want to hear from, is Bob Jolly gonna be here or not?
I was hoping so. The, last time I talked to him, last Thursday, I think it was, he said he was planning on being here.
Should we have Dallas?
I think between the two of them, they can set the stage. Somebody needs to set the stage.
Okay, should we have them come up?
I would think so.
Be close here as well?
Certainly. Thank you for being here, both of you. I appreciate that. So turn the floor over to the airport advisory committee.
Dallas, why don't you at least come up to the microphone, I guess, if that one's active?
Okay. Yeah, that way we're recording this meeting as we do all of them. So it'll just help with the recording. Thank you.
Okay. I'm Dallas Anderson. I don't believe we've met before.
Yeah, we have.
Eleven.
Yeah, I'm Ryan Denso. This is Brian Pally. We've met with Brian several times.
Yeah, I've met you vice chair.
It's been so long.
How do you spell your name?
My first name is Brian with a Y.
P-A-L-L-E.
And then my last name is Pally, P as in Paul, A-L-L-E.
Okay, well, that's an overview from our point of view. We sent out a request for bid last year. I don't remember the dates. I, I misplaced the paperwork that I kept for this project. So memory is not 100%. We sent out that, the request for bid, first part of April last year, I believe. About two weeks after that, the fuel dispenser that we had, the old one, had a breakdown. And we asked Matt's Pump Service, he'd been working on for us for the last few years, to come out and take a look. Well, he troubleshooting it and determined that for one thing, the counter had gone bad. And for another thing, he said that he was pretty sure the 52 valve went bad.
The what?
Well, told him that, by the time, and by the time he got through the troubleshooting, we'd already gotten the bid back from Eaton and installation date. So we decided not to have that overworked on and had any money spent on it.
Dallas, can you explain 52 valve?
Well, it is, in the plumbing of the system, it is the first valve just before the fuel goes into the dispenser itself.
Okay.
There's a valve out of the tank, and not at all without. And then it allows the fuel to come through the plumbing. The pump in the dispenser is a suction type pump. So it pulls the fuel to that 52 valve. And so he advised us and he was pretty sure that thing was bad. And we told him we didn't want to work on it anymore. He said, be sure and tell the guys from Eaton when they get there that they should look at that 52 valve because he was pretty sure it was bad.
So it's an electric solenoid?
It's a solenoid, yeah. So the crew comes out with the new dispenser and all set to work and everything. And Bob Jolly, our airport manager and vice chairman, Bob Custer, he's a mechanic in the county. He knows about fuel systems. And a guy named Bob Giacomelli had been involved in fuel systems in the air force. And the three of them talked to the guy that was the head of that crew. I forget his name. Nice guy, though. I can hold up.
From?
From, yes.
Make it clear, Dallas, they came to do what? Replace the pump or to replace?
Replace the dispenser.
Is the 52 valve part of that replacement or is that a separate?
No, the 52 valve would have been, it wouldn't, it wouldn't have nothing to do with the replacement of the, of the dispenser.
Gotcha.
But they told the guy that was head of the crew that they should look at that 52 valve before they put the new dispenser on it. Because Matt's Pump Service advised us that it was probably bad. And with us not being mechanics and, you know, we don't take things apart or anything. Well, the guy kind of poo-pooed that statement. He said, in effect, that those things can never go bad. I've never seen a 52 valve go bad. And so they took out the old pump like it was supposed to and installed the new dispenser. Did a lot of wiring and all that kind of stuff. And tried to start the pump. And, you know, the disp, pump and the dispenser, well, it wouldn't start, it wouldn't run. And so the electrician filled with the wiring a little while longer and got it to start to run, but it wouldn't pump fuel. And after just a little bit, the motor blocked down and popped circuitry. I was late in the day and packed up and left. Almost a week later, I emailed Brian to ask him when they were coming back. And about Wednesday or so of the next week, I got a note back from Doc. Brian said they were gonna be there the next Monday. And, and they were. And they brought two mechanics and the electrician. And they worked on it all day long. Finally got, got to pump some fuel, but still it popped circuitry. Now, from here into the future, since I don't have records that I kept, I'm a little, a little fussy. But there was a period there that I emailed Brian in the end of the, that week that they were there, did not get a response. I emailed him again about Tuesday of the next week, didn't get a response. Towards the end of that week, I emailed him and asked him when they were coming back. And if you remember, I kind of, in effect, I asked if they'd abandoned the project because it was running towards three weeks by then. And I don't remember, it was a day or two, I got a message back, said they'd not abandoned the project, that they'd been discussing the problem in the office. And then the next week, I think it was Tuesday, the electrician came out. And I helped him troubleshoot the whole electrical system from the break box out through the transformers to the dispenser. And my basis for saying that I helped him troubleshoot that was that I was an electrical specialist in the air force, aircraft electrical for 15 years. I worked for the post office as an industrial electrician, high voltage to 600 volts, for four years. So I have some background in electrical systems. We found that the electrical system supply was not normal. And because it was popping the circuit breaker all the time, I, I mentioned to him, I said, why don't you just take the belt off the pulley to the pump unit and the motor, see if the motor is the problem? Well, up to that time, we'd been using an ammeter to check power draw. And turned the pump on and that motor was pulling 14 to 19 amps trying to start. And then it drew over 22 and popped circuitry. So we took the belt off the motor and pump unit and the motor ran fine. Start up, that motor drew about four amps, settled down to two and a half on the run. And he, he ran that pump for 20 minutes on occasion. Nothing wrong with the power draw.
So Dallas, what did you determine was the problem with the pump? The fuel dispenser, let me put it that way. What was, why was it not, what was, what was the final issue?
Well, the pump unit in the new dispenser was bad. And ultimately, that got replaced. And the last time we were out there, I was on vacation by then. I was pretty glad for the report. Finally determined they should look at the 52 valve. They took all the, well...
Keep it in step, Dallas.
I'm trying to.
You checked the motor and then you checked the...
The motor, yeah. Turned, turned the shaft and the... Turned the shaft in the pump units and it was all crackedly and granky. You could hardly turn it. It was bound up something ferocious. Anyway.
So they re-replaced the pump?
Re-replaced that valve.
Okay. But not this valve, correct?
But they finally got to the valve and took the diaphragm out of it. Well, that helped some. They went back in there, took all the insides out of that valve, which didn't need that valve because of the new dispenser. Buttoned it all back up and bingo. It worked fine at that point. And it's been working fine since.
So what's the issue then with the money?
The issue? Well, for me personally, I think there was way too many trips made and some not so... How do I, I don't want to keep it mean or anything, but less than adequate troubleshooting, I think.
So Dallas, the pump in the system that Eaton supplied was bad. They came out and replaced it, correct?
And about the third or fourth trip, they replaced that.
Okay. And that certainly would be their responsibility since it's their pump.
Well, that would have been a warranty.
This valve that you found it was bad, was that, was that part of the request for proposal? Was that, should that have been their responsibility to check that and replace it if it was bad? Or is that something outside the scope of what they did?
Technically, no. Because that valve was bad after they responded to the bid request.
Did the bid request have checked the system and meaning the entire system or just the pump on the downflow side of the valve?
Well, I believe Brian has a copy of the bid request and the scope of work.
So I can, I can touch on that, I don't mean to interrupt.
Let me, so will you answer a question?
Well, I can give you my involvement in this. I'm an estimated salesman. So when I receive a bid request or request for proposal...
Can I start for a second? I have a handout that I'd like to give each one of you. And what it is, all it is, is it's a paper trail of everything that has occurred since the request was made. So it's just all the documentation that we were looking into over this project. And that should be enough. And who else knew? But there's more copies right there. I'm sorry, Brian, go ahead.
No, it's okay, I'm sorry. So my involvement when I receive a request for proposal, request for bid is to visit the site, obtain as much information as I possibly can for not only myself and Rand, but our technicians that are coming to the site. They don't make surprises. Nobody does. So I came out and met with Dallas. We looked at the entire system, opened everything up, took pictures of everything so I could take it back to the office. I discussed with my construction foreman, Jim, who I believe Dallas had referred to. I make sure that he sees it. I ask him... Because I'm, I'm not a construction guy. I ask him, what are you going to need? What do I need to bid, et cetera, et cetera? So if you look at, if you look at Invitation to Bid, which is on our top page here, and then if you look at my quote... Well, let me digress. I actually came out before the request for proposal came out, if I'm not mistaken. And you wanted a budget quote, maybe an estimated?
Right.
So it was almost like six months the prior year, I believe. Sorry, get my facts straight. I came out prior to that and gave Dallas a budget quote of what we thought it was going to cost. So what I did is I sent him a budget quote and that is basically the back page. Well, that was our, that was our quote, our firm quote. I don't know what the estimated quote was, but I'm guessing it was probably right around that number. So as you can tell, our Invitation to Bid is basically a mirror copy of what I wrote to the bid. So that was my involvement in this. There was no discussion about troubleshooting, any issues. One of the questions I always ask that I was taught by Rand and Joe, by the guy that trained me, you always ask if there's anything that we should know about, any issues that we need to know about. There is no point in coming out and replacing a suction pump or dispenser if the existing one isn't going to work. Doesn't have to be anywhere.
Doesn't any cover it?
Well, we're verifying the proper operation of the new fuel dispenser.
Right, so if it didn't work, you need to verify and count what it could have...
Correct.
But to me, be part of what you had to figure out what was wrong.
Well, I guess Rand can probably touch on that better than I can.
That part of the scope of work is not figuring out pre-existing problems.
It didn't work. Can I put a step into that? Brian's first visit, yes, we looked at everything. And at that time, our old dispenser was, was working. The problem with that old dispenser is that it went bad after the Invitation to Bid was sent out. And the last troubleshooting that Matt's Pump Service did on it was a week before scheduled installation of the new. That's why there was no troubleshooting involved in the Invitation to Bid because at the time we left the bid out, that old pump was working bad.
So can I try and kind of get down to the meat of what we're discussing here? The question is, the additional expenses that Eaton charged to come out to troubleshoot a pump that they installed that wasn't working properly? What was determined, what I think I'm hearing is, was beyond the scope of what their project was. Is that correct?
The ultimate problem item was the 52 valve.
And that was beyond the scope of what they did on it?
That was beyond the scope of the bid, yes.
Okay.
But we did advise them of it before they ever turned the screw to take the old one out.
Why was that not part of the bid if that was the case?
Because when the bid was let, that valve was not known to be bad.
Did you, did you...
The old system was working.
I understand. Did you change the contract for them to go ahead of... Assuming they have the, that's part of their scope of employment. Could they, do they have the ability to change that? Or did you ask them to do that?
I was not there at the time that Bob Jolly, Bob Custer and Bob Giacomelli told them that we were advised that that valve was bad.
But if we knew the valve was bad and was not part of the scope of their end project, why wouldn't we not take it upon ourselves to do one of two things? Either hire them to fix that valve as a separate expense or hire, what was it, MC, Mac?
Mac.
Mac Pro to do it? Why would we not have taken it upon ourselves if we knew it was bad?
Well, I suppose... Well, I can't speak for anybody else. And we, Bob Jolly, we're here. I know that we would have signed off on an extra charge for that, you know, working on that valve.
Okay, so don't speculate.
I can't speculate.
Jay's got a good point. What, what we need to get from here is why did it cost $3,500 to troubleshoot? What did you troubleshoot after the fact? And the fact is, your pump was defective. And the original one, whatever the flywheel was that was bound up and you had to replace it again, right? I mean, that was just a separate issue.
Well, let me say this.
But why did it cost that much? We need to understand what you actually did.
Okay, let's let Dallas go first. About mid-July, Eaton stopped communicating with me. And all communications after that was with Bob Jolly.
Okay. Okay. All right, anything else before we turn the floor over to these gentlemen?
That's about it as I know it.
Okay, all right, thank you. And certainly you'll be welcome to interject if you want. Gentlemen?
All right, let me just... First of all, let me apologize. I, I thought our meeting was at 10:30. So that's, we're a little early. But thank you for letting us come here and talk about this issue. A little background on 52 PR valve. It's not a solenoid valve. It's a, it's a pressure regulating valve that used to be, years ago, used as a means of preventing syphon flow from the ground tanks. That's the purpose of that valve. They haven't been used in at least 25 years. The company that made those went out of business 15 years ago about, I would say. And they were absorbed by another business within the industry. They weren't used... I've been in this business for 23 years now. At no point have I ever, ever installed a 52 PR valve. They just haven't been used in a long, long time because at some point, people in the industry decided to start using other means of doing the same thing. One being is it has to have a shear valve underneath the dispenser. The 52 PR valve doesn't qualify as a shear valve. And then also, solenoid valves are normally used for that purpose of preventing syphon flow or an anti-syphon flow valve at the tank. So the 52 PR valve is, is an old piece of equipment. Jim, who was our foreman for construction, he'd never seen one before, hadn't he? He didn't even know what the heck that was. And so, and it wasn't part of the scope of the work and our guys are trained. And I, and honestly, I don't know that Jim was ever told anything about it. And I'll get to that later. But he wouldn't have known what it even does. I'm the one that identified the 52 PR valve because I have seen them in the past. And I pointed it out that maybe that could be the problem. And then, and actually, once I identified that, then Bob Jolly and the other guy said, oh, yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that was a bad thing. And then Matt's Pump Service decided that that was bad. Like, well, it would have been nice to know. So anyway, he'd never seen one and I don't know much about them myself. That's no excuse, I guess. Ignorance is no excuse for not, you know, knowing how to fix something. But at the point, it was, it wasn't part of our scope of work. We, I don't know that Dallas emailed Brian. We never gave up on this job. When, when we had an electrician and one of our technicians down here, I think it was after the second or third time we were here, including the time that we installed the dispenser, the tank was almost out of fuel. And at that point, we weren't sure if we were having problems because the tank was out of fuel or if we were still having problems with our pump. And so we instructed Dallas to please call us when you have fuel in the tank and then we'll come back and we'll do, continue our troubleshooting. That's why there was a period of time that we weren't coming to the site. Whatever communication was going on. I apologize if that communication was dropped. We told him on the phone that we would call him or that he should call us when they had fuel in the tank and we would continue the troubleshooting and get the problems resolved. I never, ever like going for change orders and normally I would, I would just absorb any extra costs unless it's so, so costly that I really can't. And on a small project like this, you know, $8,000, there's not a lot of room there for me to play with, especially when you bid it competitively and there's not much of a margin in it either. So we, we went by this couple of words. You know, that's, that's what we did. We actually have written it, basically. And our first invoice, I included that in the packet here. The, the pumping unit itself, I don't believe that it ever went bad. The one that we put in. I think it was having problems and I think it was because of the restrictions that it was trying to overcome in all this troubleshooting that we were doing. So we may have worn out some of that, some, something in there. But the fact of the matter is, when we took the pumping unit out from the first dispenser that we installed, put in a new pumping unit, we got, we still had the same problem, okay? We got the, we got the pump, which is a $2,000 pump. We got that covered under warranty though. So that was, that was completely covered under warranty, not an issue in this discussion. And I, and because I don't like extras and Bob Jolly was, you know, bless his soul, he was really good to work with. He worked with us back and forth. He goes, let's just get through this together and then we'll, we'll settle up at the end, you know? And that's what we agreed to do. I know that's probably not a way that I should have done it. You know, hindsight is 20/20. I know from being a construction project manager all these years that, you know, whenever you have an issue, you stop and say, wait, wait, wait. Let's, let's figure out what's entailed. And I didn't do that. So I'll, I'll take the blame for that. Now, there was more than just the PR valve that was bad. We also had to replace a solenoid valve on external to the dispenser that was existing because that wasn't opening up. And then we also had to replace a relay inside of a QT carburetor, which was not part of our scope of work. So there were a number of problems.
Where was that solenoid valve? Was it toward the tank?
It was right next to the dispenser. Right around, right next to the dispenser.
Is that something normally you do when you put a pump in? Or is that something over and above?
I mean, we normally, we would assume that everything existing is working except for what we've been hired to replace. And that's, that's what we had to assume. And we didn't know at any time if this dispenser had got, had stopped working and there were other issues. And that, that wasn't brought to my attention anyway until I actually came down here with Brian to figure out what was going on. And, and knowing that Dallas and probably the other guys were really mad at us because we had dropped the ball and not been here for a month when we were, thought we were waiting for them to tell us they were ready for us. So anyway, that's another... There's something else I wanted to clarify here. Okay, that, I did that. I tried to be as fair as possible. This... Yeah, we, we billed you about $2,200 extra for the additional charges. And I, and all I did is billed for 25 hours of labor of $70 an hour. And our normal rate at that time was $82 per hour. So I gave you a discounted rate. I also didn't charge for even half of the labor that was entailed in getting this whole system to work. And I itemized on this sheet right here, if I had billed out of everything that we actually had into the job, it would have been another, an extra $6,725. So I absorbed all the other costs involved. And of course, the $6,725 would be with, with margin built in, of course, you know, normal margins. Or invite the electrician.
She didn't bill us for the solenoid valve?
I didn't.
Okay. We are in bed with a solenoid valve. I mean, I think the solenoid valve was already paid for.
Regardless of whether I had bought that solenoid valve for another job and did not use it and then used it on your job, does not matter. It was a cost that I had put out already. I had costs involved in that solenoid valve. Yes, it was sitting on our shelf.
So are you saying, and please correct me if I'm not saying this properly, that the additional cost was not an Eaton problem? It was, we had other problems in the system that included your pump to work properly?
That's correct.
Why, why were you not able to determine that before we spent 30, before we billed for $3,500? Is there something that could have been found?
I guess if you had, if you had been a technician in the industry for over 25 years, you probably, you might have been able to figure it out quicker. I knew enough just to be dangerous. You know, I knew what it does. I know that, you know, that they used to be used. I knew that they had diaphragms in them. And so what I determined, and I, I think, is that we should just gut that valve because it's not meant, it wasn't necessary to have it there anyway. Well, not knowing how that valve was totally built, we did gut it, we thought. While not knowing how that valve was totally built, we did gut it, we thought, okay? We took the diaphragm out, we took the top portions of it out. We didn't realize there was another mere section of that below the parts that we took out. So, there was another diaphragm there that restricted the flow, and I didn't.
So, if there was a more, if you came out instead of your technician, that $3,500, you might have noticed it much sooner, and the additional cost of $3,500 may have been less with someone more knowledgeable, like someone like yourself who would have looked at it and said, "Oh, wait a minute, we don't need that, we should bypass it," or whatever you have to do. So, it sounds to me like maybe we ought to come up with some kind of compromise here? I mean, it sounds to me, we have liability here, it appears to me, and I'm speaking for myself now, not the other commissioners, because we had other issues that were beyond the scope of this. Your folks came out multiple times to try and fix it. I recognize as discrepancy as to, you didn't respond in a timely manner. And then, the other side of that story is, we were waiting for you to tell us you had enough fuel so we could use it. I understand that completely, that it's, you know, either a miscommunication or whatever. I'm not even going there, it doesn't matter. But the point is, you came out multiple times to fix something that wasn't your problem, but had you brought the right person out in the first place, the first time, they might have said, "Well, here's the problem, it's not our issue. Get that changed, and we'll be in good shape." So, it seems to me like we both have some culpability here, and what I would love to see is maybe we can compromise something that would be reasonable. And I'm speaking for myself right now, I'm not speaking for the other commissioners. That's how I feel.
Can you help clarify a few things for me? We have paid Eaton sales $8,850 to date.
Right.
Okay. And the original bid, I'm looking, just trying to skim through this, I see $11,100. Was that the original bid plus the additional expense occurred? So, the total bill from you would have been $11,100?
Right.
Okay. And then, I go back to this page on the backside, with the, excuse me, the amounts invoiced to Custer County, that was after the $8,850, subsequent to $8,850 of this page right there.
No.
The $2,250?
The $2,250 is the additional cost.
Yeah, after, not including the $8,850.
Right. So, you take the $8,850 and the $2,250.
And you come up with $11,000.
Yeah, okay.
And then I also saw that you had reduced your labor rate by $12 an hour, is that correct?
That's true.
And then, 25 hours of travel time and time on the job, is that?
Okay.
So, picking up on that, just to be clear, because we've been hearing 3,300 or whatever is coming from number two. The actual difference that you want, or who you billed us is the $2,250.
Correct.
That's it. Above the $8,850, it's not $3,000, whatever. So, we're arguing over $2,000. Jake pointed out a compromise maybe on that, but that's something we can talk about.
Well, and the way I look at it is, number one, I do believe that regardless of timeline, which most of the parties have talked about, the influencing factors there, I personally believe from what I've looked at here, that you performed the work within the scope of the work that you bid originally. Is that a reasonable statement? I mean, we asked them to repair, replace the dispenser, they did that, true?
True.
Okay. That's what the $8,850 was pulled.
Right.
Subsequent money then was directed towards troubleshooting and replacing, did you replace the PR valve, or did you do away with that?
We did away with it.
Or repaired it?
Okay. But if I could...
The 52 PR valve was just gutted.
Okay.
Still in line, it's just empty.
Right. Non-functional.
Commissioner, I agree completely with what you're saying. They did what the scope of the business was. But the purpose of it was, was to have a fuel dispenser that the airport could use to dispense fuel. Obviously, it wasn't working. So, we had to assume what was changed. We brought a new pump in, and for whatever reason, it wasn't working. Come to find out, after extensive trips and additional expense, come to find out, it was something that we did, not them. However, with their expertise, I feel, they could have said to us, "Hey, wait a minute, we did what was supposed to, but the reason it's not dispensing is because..." Then they tell us, "This is your problem, fix it, it's not part of the scope." So, the multiple trips back and forth, in my opinion, was excessive if we had someone who could have looked at it the first trip and said, "Whoa, I see the problem here, it's the PR valve." So, yes, they did the scope of the work, but the purpose of it was to put in a fuel dispenser to dispense fuel. I get it that if there's no fuel in the tank, it's going to be hard to check. I understand that completely. So, I think, I'll stick with my statement, I feel both sides have some culpability here. Maybe if we decide, I mean, I don't know if you're willing to discuss a compromise, I don't know if you are or not, that's certainly up to you, but I would certainly entertain maybe splitting it or something like that. Dallas, go ahead.
I had forgotten about that, that misapprehension, if you, I guess that's the right word, that we had no fuel. And I got an email to that effect, and I emailed right back and said, "No, we've never been out of fuel. We were never less than 500 gallons in the tank through that whole ordeal." So, I don't know where that "we were out of fuel" thing came from.
Okay.
I don't know who it was that said that.
Where I was headed with the, I guess I was just after clarification, that the $8,850 for replacing the dispenser, we're good with that, and that's really not part of the discussion that we're here today to talk about.
Right.
Okay. So, yeah, I kind of concur with Commissioner Prince. It would be nice to strike some kind of an agreement. Totally with respect that you discounted your labor rate and obviously discounted the number of hours that you would have normally have built, is that true?
Absolutely.
When did you tell, have you ever told the airport guys that you didn't, have they ever seen this, what it would have cost?
No.
All I've ever heard is, "We're going to charge it $3,000 more." I mean, that's the number we, I've heard of some other means.
I'm the always.
But we already see that it's really $2,200. It seems that you've already made a big compromise of some kind, but we never were aware of it.
Well, it's actually in the invoice. Let's see. Do you believe, I mean, I itemized that.
You showed up, would I have, here, what we will do?
No, but I did, I did point out that we were discounting that.
You first said, you didn't, but that didn't give you any clue about that amount.
So, you tracked the install, and the electrician extra charge was $500.
You go with the bill.
Page one.
Yeah.
It's actually the second page of the...
So, about three quarters of the way down there, in our narrative there, does that show exactly what we're going to be speaking about? Our additional labor, and the additional labor at no charge? So, I believe we had 17, 15, 500, it's 20, 25, 30. That's where we're at there.
Well...
So, how are we going to resolve this?
Yeah, I guess...
Can I just point out something else too? On the very end of this packet, I included some additional work to be, actually, we did after all of this, after the letters were exchanged and everything. And it was just, you got a call that the, if the system wasn't working properly, you never saw this. You never saw this invoice, we never sent you anything showing you that this is what we, our costs were incurred. We just took it internally and zeroed out the books, because it's not worth, it's not worth to try and collect this. But, anyway, so, it was 13 and a quarter hours, and then my office that went into this troubleshooting and repair of a problem that was not even part of the dispenser, it was the QT carbureator. We just fixed it, didn't invoice you, and that would have been $11,000.
So, can I ask, what do you think's a fair compromise? What do you think we should do? How are we going to resolve this? Tell me what you think.
My offers are already, I can't answer the $2,250. That's, I think that's more than fair. I've absorbed a huge amount of costs. I'll lose money no matter what. If you pay me $2,250 extra, I've lost mine, so...
This is not why we're here. We're not here to...
No, and I...
We're the custodians of tax dollars, we're very concerned about spending them if we don't need to.
Right.
And so, we're very concerned about it. We're not, I mean, if I had to sit here and talk about every $2,000 bill that came in, I, you know, I'll have gray hair, wait, I already do. But you know what I'm saying? You know what I'm saying? But the question was brought to us was, "Wait a minute, we don't feel we owe it because you fell down on your job. Listen to the other side of this, wait a minute, there's two sides to every story, we always know that." You know, and maybe what you're saying, the $2,200 is fair? I mean, based on what you have already given in, that you haven't charged for, I still would like to feel that had someone come out the first time who had more experience, some of this expense would not have been here. I don't think that's our responsibility, I think you just didn't send the right technician out.
I don't have a technician who's ever checked us to work.
I understand that. You told me it was 15 years since the last time it was put in. So, I don't know.
I agree with you, Jay. However, I also see a communication problem both sides. You both, I mean, I think if you'd have clearly told these guys what you did and what you did absorb, and this was actually the actual cost, I don't know that we would have been arguing, and they might have come up with a, with a, "Well, okay, they hadn't met us more than halfway," or whatever, and would have recommended to us something maybe different. So, now it just kind of escalated. Both your communications have caused the problem, and we're wasting a lot of taxpayer money sitting here worrying about it, you know?
I'd get paid by the hours, fortunately.
Well, obviously, it looks like you've come to the table with basically a 33% proposal. You're asking for about a third of what morally would have been there, of 6,700, $40, $4,500, $4,500, $2,500.
$4,500, $93 cents.
So, I personally feel as a commissioner that, number one, you did work within your scope, and I think we all are in agreement with that. Obviously, we were led down the road where we had other issues that you would never bid, you never bid that, it wasn't in your scope of work. I feel like you've come to the table with a fair amount. I'm going to move that the commissioners pay the $2,250.
A second, I'll just give you patience and understanding, we'll be willing to come to a second.
I'll second.
Can I just add one thing too? Just where we're at right now with your suction pump going there? We do, and I'm not trying to get...
More to spend.
I was going to say that. I'll be the bearer of bad news.
And we did tell the guys at the airport, especially Bob Jolly, about this.
So, that valve underneath is gutted, there's nothing to stop. Okay, let me digress. If a car, a vehicle, an airplane were to hit that dispenser...
No shear valve.
There's no shear valve. So, that does need to be replaced and brought into current regulations. So, I just want to make you guys aware that that does need to be replaced, so there's no...
It's only noted, it's on the record.
Gentlemen, any further discussion on the motion?
No.
Prince, Terry, now proceed to vote. All in favor of paying $2,250 to Eaton Sales to settle our account with them, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. Again, thank you, number one, for being willing to come.
Thank you, thank you for your time. And thanks for coming and explaining your side. Not that we didn't hear, I mean, we only hear one side. I appreciate you coming down, discussing with us, explaining what was going on. We've heard drips and drams over the last few months, and getting a much broader picture was much, was very helpful to us. I appreciate you coming down and discussing. Thank you.
I also want to thank the airport board guys.
Absolutely.
Because they did put a lot of work in this, and they did try to explain.
Go ahead.
To close this out, the reason we came to this point today is when we received the invoice from Eaton, and as I remember, the extra charges were like $3,300, $3,400 over. And I presented that to the commission at the time, before this board was at. And one of the members of the commission looked at that and said, "Hey, what's going on here?" And, you know, I tried to, I explained that there was multiple trips and troubleshooting and all, ran the bill up. Because of the amount of the bill, and because it was Custer County CIP, it was the commissioner's approval to pay that, to pay that bill, and one of the commissioners balked on it, and that's how we got to where we are today.
And Dallas, I was sitting there, and I remember that, and you're 100% correct. The reason we didn't, the reason the commission at the time was opposed to it because we were under the assumption that it took, they're charging us extra to fix a problem that, because the pump wasn't working, that it was something they did not do appropriately. And it took a while to determine that. I don't think we're talking about enough money here to really argue about. I think the airport board did a wonderful job, you brought us the issue to us. Today, we learned more information, and based on that, I think we made the decision we made. So, I appreciate what you guys have done, I appreciate yous too.
I'm not the whole thing, myself, but as you remember, I tried to explain to the commissioners back then that that valve was not part of the bid, and it took a while to talk somebody into getting into it.
I agree.
Mr. Brenda, are we okay? Should we ask Eaton to re-invoice, or do we have an invoice? Because I kept hearing $3,350, so I...
Yeah, I did too. So, where is that invoice? You didn't ever send us any, so you need to send us that.
We did.
The $2,250.
Yeah, and if we need to be, like, real shortly, we can do a handwritten check.
Got it here.
Like, soon.
Yeah, but you paid $8,850 on the invoice already, so you just need to get a balance.
Okay.
Can you insta another, you know, on the same access? Do you do a dollar?
I'll have to go back. Do you have the invoice? Do you have the original, or no? Because I'll have to go back and dig out.
Well, Donna would have it.
Well, you have a copy of the invoice.
Yeah, I'll just take the copy of that.
Okay, page two.
Just, this is the invoice.
Second page back.
It's normally our written checks.
So, this is the one that you paid $8,850.
Can I make a motion? Will you adjourn?
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
We've been seconded to adjourn, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Carrie, is meeting adjourned?